Oh my God, so going a half a mile probably is a little bit of an adventure huh?
Is he not adorable?
You must love him.
I truly love him. My husband loves him as much if not more than I do.
You can give me a call, you have my phone number.
Me too, I grew up on identity. Isn't Charlie adorable?
Working with the...
Not too likely right now.
Charlie's a good person. Yeah. Charlie's a good person. Charlie's only 100 pounds.
Somewhere between.
Yeah. You have to weigh.
Yes, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, she and I are kind of broke up into two different parties.
Horses don't teach each other. So she and I are taking it very lightly. But a cow is looking at things and they say it's so easy.
Everybody's been, I'm treasurer and running the streets.
Two cows, two horses, a chicken, six dogs. One chicken slapped out of 26.
I'm glad to see that you've jumped in on the CIP.
Yeah, it's pretty funny. It's all full circle.
She's so friendly.
Well, I drive one article to town meeting.
Yeah, a long time ago.
I think it was 20 years ago.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, you know, somebody said to me once, why do you keep all these animals when they're getting old? I said, well, you better hope your kids say that about you. Now, this is true.
And it got pushed out, it was the very last, became the last one. And I just kind of, it was absolutely...
Yeah.
To authorize the select board to establish the CIP committee.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, yeah.
He's gonna force the town to buy all these things.
Yeah, that didn't happen.
No, it got shot there, I understand.
Oh, so it didn't, it actually didn't buy them?
And so, almost like six or 15 years later, the planning board decided, hey, let's establish our own committee. It's a statute, so we're eligible. The planning board can establish their committee, but the select board can't do it if they're authorized. So, I tried to inspire the planning board. No, so I tried to inspire the planning board. So, Bob Smith finally took it on, and then he was possible. Paul Tendana worked with the select board. It wasn't a coincidence, actually. So, it's total.
It's just sweet. My dear, I think that's never done before. I mean, you would never, not even try. So why would we not do it for them? You know, it's hard for them. And he was off with the third business now. Every year, it's gonna come again.
Well, in that time, the planning board, Joe Ford, it was a line, you know, that's spending money on anything. It was just funny. So, I convinced Joe Ford to support it.
Did you get the hail today?
But did he get up to tell me and say anything? No. I was serious.
Sally, she knows. Sally used to be in 2008. I mean, when you and I worked...
Wait for that, it was the 90s.
What was the lead citizen that you first mentioned?
Do you remember Sherry?
Oh, yeah, Sherry.
So, yes, we adopted this, we took it in 2000.
And Joe was still alive, because I remember I interviewed Joe.
Really? At that time?
It was the first thing I did, was interview Joe, because he was ready. And so, the idea was to put him on.
Okay. Wow. So, it probably had been around 2000. I was at Underwood one year, so...
And Corin might not be here. Birth imminent. Well, that's what he told us last week.
When I brought the Warren article for the mission, I think it was around 2000.
It's 602 here in Lee.
I had Morgan General.
Well, I was gonna say, yeah, we'll have to transition.
Okay, Karen Rossi, you have the floor.
Good evening, everybody. I'm assuming everybody got my budget presentation from...
Somebody.
Somebody, yeah.
It's you somewhere.
Yeah. We'll highlight the two increases, and then if anybody has any questions, I will happily answer them. Direct Regional Planning Commission dues went up $45.67. And cellphone reimbursement in fiscal year '22 was in my budget for '720. It was taken out for fiscal year '23, and now it's back in, so each department reflects what their costs are, right?
That's the next one I'm saying. Yes, we're going to add it to my budget.
Yeah. And that's $1,150, so it's an increase of $1,150 moved from town administration to my budget. We've given an overall budget increase of 1195.67. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. It's pretty straightforward. Pretty small budget. But...
How many phones does that...
Two.
This was a result of the move to keep the more talkative town employees on a town-owned phone.
Wow.
Not just talkative, but we did have a differentiated...
Put that in the notes.
They need to talk to the public.
Well, a lot of people have, like, their personal, their personal phones are being used for town business. So, this means that all town business is on town phones.
It sounds better than saying people that might get in trouble more than others. We made sure they had town-owned...
Maybe you should stop doing that.
So, yeah, so this is, yeah, so that's what that, so it's two phones.
Karen, can you talk about activity level for, for, for permits and...
Sure, um, sure.
How, how you are for staffing?
Staffing is fine, um, it is, we only have, one, currently only have one subdivision underway. So, it's one subdivision and homeowner things. Um, there's a couple of vacant individual lots that have recently sold, actually three, um, and the subdivision. So, we're fine staffing-wise. Um, last year, there was only 11 new homes, um, done. A total of four, just under 400 permits, but only 11 of those were new homes, the rest of them was homeowner things. So, not as high as it has been in the past, but still very busy. The first quarter this year was one new home and 96 permits. And the second quarter is still not complete yet, so we have, I don't have those totals.
Anything going out the circle?
Yes. At the circle is, I'm sorry?
I said, can you tell us?
At the circle that's public is the addition to the Aubuchon Hardware Store, the car wash at the old Come and Go. And that's the only two things that are set in stone at the circle right now.
I thought you were saying there was something to gas.
It didn't happen. That's still in the works.
That's still in the works?
Yeah. Still in the zone.
And not the little, not the hot dog guy or whatever?
That's not, that's under agreement again with something different.
Something different?
Yep.
And you don't know?
I do know, but I'm not at liberty to say. I can't speak until it's made a public application.
You shouldn't be in the planning of that anymore.
I know, I couldn't know. Get it out. The circle, the development there, the gas station will go now.
They have a contract with somebody.
Okay. Do you know?
I do, it's not public. All right, we're not public at this point.
Come along.
They really just want, they just want Karen here so they can ask more questions.
Give us the tea.
Too many questions pertaining to my budget.
Right?
Nope.
Just nosy. No, that's fine.
Please, you're honored.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Yeah, you had a good time there, Karen.
Next, we have the fire department, please.
I'm gonna allow McGregor before me.
Oh, okay.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you.
It seems like a yearly thing.
It is yearly. It's very good, isn't it?
Yeah, he's good.
Microphone's very tall. Hello, good evening.
Hello.
Hello. So, do people have copies of my submission, or maybe you need it?
Yeah.
I can, I brought a few extra if anyone wants one.
Take one. Sure. Who else?
I'm old school, I like...
Old school's good.
Who else would like one? Love one. Thank you. So, let me just start by doing a kind of a brief update of McGregor, kind of more globally, and then get into the specific budget numbers. So, I know many of you are familiar with us, I know there are many familiar faces that I get to see every year. So, I'll try to keep the recap brief. We are the 91 ambulance service for Durham, the Mabry, and the University of New Hampshire. We've been doing this since 1968. We are primarily a volunteer ambulance service, although we're gonna talk some about the staff piece of things, because that's becoming a much, much more challenging piece as we go forward. One of the things that I've talked about in the past, and that I think one of the folks who, Scott Bugbee, who isn't here, but had asked me to just talk, speak to a little bit, was our station needs. So, we've been in our current station since about 1985, and it's, it really is extremely cramped. Actually, during COVID, we, on an emergency basis, moved out of it, because at the time, we were fitting eight people into, it was basically like submarine quarters. It was, you know, literally bunk beds, right, one on top of the other. I think you may have seen it before. Is that a fair description?
Very fair description, yeah.
Yeah, so, and they also found, like, deadly mold in the walls, so they decided to get us out of there for COVID. So, we're now back in that facility. We have a conversation coming up with UNH about what comes next, right? And really, what we're trying to do is kind of two parallel paths, in my view. One is to pursue, you know, what, what options are there, you know, within the university system? The problem with that inevitably becomes that renovating a new, renovating an existing building is not inexpensive, right? Particularly to state standards. I think, and it's unclear what funding would be available from the university to help facilitate that process. The other kind of parallel track that we're looking at is, you know, could we, ideally through a donation of land, you know, get land and build a standalone facility? There's this kind of third option, I think, is largely backburnered, where, you know, the town of Durham has looked at a public safety complex. I think that, my sense of the politics of that is that that's, that is the most expensive option from a town perspective, and is likely to stay backburnered. So, those are some of the very high-level issues that, you know, we're dealing with. What has been really strong from McGregor over the last couple of years, and somewhat remarkable given COVID, is the volunteer aspect of things. Actually, 2020 and 2021 were both record-setting years in terms of our volunteer hours. About, actually, 2020 was over 40,000 hours. Usually, it's typically like 32, 33,000 hours is more typical. And this year is, is still very strong. I don't think we're gonna be, we're not gonna be breaking 40,000 hours this year, but it's still very strong. What's becoming increasingly a challenge for us, and let me just speak to, because it's gonna get to some of the budget numbers, is we do employ 24/7 paramedic coverage. And I always try to, you know, I know many of you have heard me say this before, but let me just briefly summarize why, in my view, paramedics are extremely important. We're really the only 24/7 paramedic service between Dover and Exeter. And so, Lee's, you know, kind of in the middle there, right? And so, the example I always use is an advanced DMT, which is what I am, and what a lot of your firefighters are. If we go out to a cardiac arrest, we can do most of what they would do in the hospital to treat that cardiac arrest patient. The problem is, if we get a pulse back, we can't at the A and T level give the drugs needed to stabilize the heart rhythm, to ideally keep them from going back into cardiac arrest, right? So, that's, that's an example. There are certain heart rhythms that, you know, a paramedic can recognize and ideally treat to keep them, you know, from deteriorating further. Reading EKG is a paramedic-level skill, if someone is, anyway, you get the idea. So, so, paramedics really are, you know, a key piece of it. And what we're seeing with the paramedic workforce is that it continues to remain small, and that because of the other healthcare workforce shortages, which I'm gonna assume that people have heard about, but if you want me to speak more to it, I can. But there are dramatic workforce shortages, is that paramedics are viewed as, you know, by the hospitals, as, hey, this is a group that we can hire, they're a little bit cheaper, and you know what? They can replace nurses who we can't find right now. So, I know, just to give you some, for instances, Exeter Hospital is now hiring paramedics into their ER and giving them full-on nursing assignments, right? And I'll tell you, I'm an RN, I'm not a paramedic, I'm an RN. I, I'm telling you, I look at my training, I look at our paramedics, I mean, these are people who I would absolutely feel comfortable taking care of me or a family member in the emergency room. They really are highly qualified. So, supply and demand, right? You have the same number of people, you have more people looking for them, and the reality is that a lot of paramedics, a lot of healthcare in general, in my view, it's been a rough couple of years. People are getting out of the, getting out of the workforce, right? And so, you know, even our supply is shrinking. So, I'm gonna give you some, some general numbers here. In 2018, when I started in this role, and if someone were to really investigate, they might find out I'm off by a year on some of this stuff. But, you know, in 2018, we were paying an entry-level paramedic that was new to McGregor, 18 bucks an hour. That was the, the base rate of pay, right? Pretty quickly after that, we bumped it up to 20, okay? At the beginning of this year, we bumped it up to $22 an hour. I just lost a paramedic to a service down in Massachusetts that told me he's making 25-something, it was like 20, it was high 25s. And he and I were doing a debrief, because this is someone who was a volunteer with us for a long time, became a paramedic, came up through the ranks. He said, look, honestly, Chris, this is the lowest-paying place that I'm seeing around here. And this is with us doing a $2 an hour increase at the beginning of this year, right? So, we're gonna have to go up to, you know, I'm seeing, the lowest I've seen recently is Amherst was at 23 over the summer, but I, we have a volunteer that works in Amherst that says that they're looking at an increase. I know York Ambulance, I was told, just did a 25% increase across the board for their medics. So, it's just crazy, right? And I, I think I've made that point. So, we're looking at these dramatically increasing workforce costs if we want to, you know, we have a lot of loyalty from our people, but what I always say is loyalty is wonderful, but you don't wanna take advantage of that, right? Because that's not a sustainable model. So, you say, all right, well, just increase what you charge the patients, right? So, I guess what the model would be. The problem with that becomes the following. What we get paid for an ambulance call is largely dictated by whatever insurance someone has, right? It's not really dictated by the bill that I send out. And I'm happy to be totally transparent about ambulance billing, and we could spend all night on it, right? And I don't, I don't wanna take up that kind of time. But what I charge a patient is ultimately set by Medicaid, Medicare, or the private, and the private insurances in theory should cover the whole thing, but increasingly, they're looking at it and they're saying, well, unless you, you take this rate that we're willing to give you, we're not even gonna talk to you. And they, and then it leaves us to deal with, you know, basically puts the patient in the middle, which is a terrible, terrible system. One of the things I've been asked at some of the Durham meetings as well, what other ambulance services do, and I've gone and surveyed all the other areas, and none of them are negotiating with these, well, I shouldn't say none. Of the, of the six or seven services that surround us, I think one or two are in, are in-network with Anthem and no other insurance, and the rest are out of network with Anthem, right? And so, it's not, it's a terrible system, right? And let me just be transparent about it, and it's not like the favorite, you know, my favorite thing to be a part of. Why do we stay out of network? The reality is that if we, we don't really, an individual ambulance service or an individual town, right? Because I've talked to the cities like Dover epping about this. Basically, the way the insurance company look at any of us is, it's a take it or leave it kind of proposition, right? So, we would bring in way less money, which would then mean that we turn around and we have to charge you guys more. And so, the net result of this is that patient billing, and it shifts wildly year over year because of just call volume and a ton of factors. COVID, obviously, really threw a lot of this out of the whack. But it's largely flat, right? I mean, if you look at it, it's like, you know, it goes up and down a lot, but the line is not increasing with our costs, and certainly not with our payroll costs. So, we don't just, you know, and just to let, you know, we don't sit idly by and just, you know, oh, well, I'll just go charge Lee more money, you know? Some of the other things that we're doing is where we just took a, we're working on a community paramedicine partnership with, one called Douglas, right? And what would that be? And I'm gonna be very, I'm not gonna do it justice, but, you know, essentially, they pay us money to go see their patients and basically try to keep their patients out of the hospital. So, in my view, that's a nice thing. Gives our paramedics some extra opportunities, it's a little bit of a recruitment tool, right? Because they get to do some things that are a little different. It's, you know, kind of on the cutting edge for the state, there's a lot of other nat, places nationally that are, that are way ahead of us, right? But statewide, there aren't a lot of programs like that. It's a little bit of a value-add to the, to the local communities without you charging any money, right? Because the hospital's paying for it. And it helps that hospital out because they're overloaded and they want the people to stay out of the hospital. So, that's a new program as of this year. The state, the Department of Health and Human Services just got wind of that, they were interested, they just gave us a $20,000 grant to look at doing this for, doing that same program for asthma, asthma patients statewide, right? So, these are things that, you know, I can't take that $20,000 and use it all for the ambulance service, but it helps defer some of our overhead costs. But the end result ends up being that it's becoming a more and more challenging conversation. And I think, you know, this may be a year where I have to come back sooner and not increase the cost, but have some more conversations about, you know, ultimately, we're a community organization, right? And I view it as part of my job is to really be engaging with the communities to, you know, to talk about it. Because to some degree, you know, if the lead could decide they don't wanna have paramedics, right? And I don't think that'd be a good decision, but, you know, I guess, you know, you have to decide what sort of service you want. So, those are very high-level things. The, the request for this coming year is really impacted by a few things. One is, our costs are going up, right? And we use three costs to calculate that, so dispatch station and the nighttime medics, the nighttime medics being the biggest figure. And I'll tell you that, that number probably isn't even gonna represent what our costs are next year, because they're, they're gonna keep going up from what I've said here. We do reduce it, but we're able, we aren't able to absorb as much of those costs as we once were, right? So, that's the part that kind of we have the most control over. The other piece of it is, we take what we charge the communities and we split them four ways. We split them between the four communities we serve. And one of the impacts that is impacted, that hits Lee in a couple of ways, right? Is UNH, how do I say this, they're being very well behaved. And so, what that is resulting in is that their call volume is lower, so it basically means that Lee is bearing a higher proportion of, of those costs. I'll tell you, the other impact to that is that healthcare in the United States is funded on a fee-for-service basis. That means that as we do less calls, the patient, you know, what we bill out goes down, right? So, that is also a factor that isn't really built into this, but may impact future years. So, a little bit of a whirlwind thing, covering a lot of ground. I should probably shut up and ask what questions you folks have.
What's the discount line item?
The discount line item is essentially, McGregor has historically taken those three costs, and then we've absorbed a portion of those costs. So, the reduction or the discount line item is essentially the portion of the costs that we absorb.
Okay, so where do you guys get money for balance that you absorb?
Where do we get money? Well, I pull my hair out and sell it. I, you know, I, no, it, it, that's a challenge, I'll tell you, I mean, that, that is, you know, increasingly a challenge, right? Ideally, right, if, if our patient billing revenue were, were matching inflation, right? It would come from, and, you know, it comes from other sources, it would come from the patient billing revenue. I think the, you know, some of these other things that we do, right? I mean, so we have, you know, our educational programs, this MIH program that I'm talking about, that brings in some money, which helps to, you know, helps to fund my position, it helps to fund the station costs, some of these other positions. So, that's been historically where it's been coming from. But, but yeah, that's something that, it's increasingly a challenge.
Okay. Chris, other years you've talked about challenges with staffing and housing costs and things, and it sounds like staffing is more stable than it's been?
Our volunteer, you know, I think I said last year that I never thought I'd see the day when it's easier to get volunteers than it is to get paid paramedics, right? Our volunteer, you know, I think I said last year that I never thought I'd see the day when it's easier to get volunteers than it is to get paid paramedics, right? It's a wonderful, wonderful thing. We really, COVID's had two impacts. We've seen more community member involvement, we've actually had more, like thirty-plus-year-olds coming into the organization volunteering for us. And, you know, we've actually seen pretty strong enrollment on our EMT side as well, from the college population. So, it would still be very helpful, right, to, you know, have housing. But, and that's something that we had tried to put some local landlords on a few years ago. And we didn't, you know, we just didn't make a lot of headway on it, you know?
So, what's our total portion, I'm sorry?
Yeah, so, sorry, if you go to the very back page of this sheet, it is, that shows the numbers, but it's thirty-one thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars.
Okay.
Which is up forty-two hundred dollars from last year.
How does Mat Berry have so many less calls than us? What's different? Is it population?
I think it's primarily population-driven, smaller, less commercial, right? So, we do go out to some of the commercial, you know, areas. I think, you know, your one nursing home is smaller than their one nursing home. I mean, the traffic circle. The traffic circle. Although, you know, the PD, I don't wanna speak out of term, but, you know, but I think the PD bears the brunt of that more than we do. We certainly do some accidents out there, but not nearly what they do. Any other questions?
Did somebody say that nursing homes is closing?
Yeah.
Quick, the cars is closing?
So, we'll have a lot less calls?
So, and I actually hadn't heard that. Is that, that is real life?
Yeah.
So, that's interesting. So, here's an interesting thing with that, right? And I just, I will leave you with this so you can all contemplate some of the stuff that we deal with, right? So, on the one hand, you say, "Oh, that's good for Lee, because we'll do less calls, we'll have a lower percentage." And I'm sure that that would save you some percentage points. But if I lose a hundred calls out of that, and I'm sure it's not a hundred calls, I don't mean to say, but, you know, whatever it is, because of me, right? It might be fifty, let's say, I don't even know, you know? And they've calmed down a little bit, but, you know, that revenue, right, is gonna be way more than, you know, what... So, because ultimately, there's a limited number of places. So, the reality is, yeah, I mean, the amount I save on gas driving out there, right, isn't gonna nearly cover those costs. And the cost to operate an ambulance service is pretty much the same, whether we do two thousand calls or three thousand calls, right?
So, should we open up a skate park maybe?
Yes, but I recommend, for your sake, that you open it in Mat Berry. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
And now the fire department.
Sit around for moral support.
That's why you let him go first, so he can skedaddle out.
He would make jokes with you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So, quickly, like Chris, I'll tell you where the fire department's at. Right now, we have four seven coverage, seven days a week. We cover every day, every holiday, there's two members here. Currently, we have four full-time positions, five including myself, but we only have three group full. They work a rotating twenty-four-hour schedule like a lot of the bigger departments do, so they average forty-two hours a week. We also have nine part-timers, including Assistant Chief Laporta, who works normally Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday to do inspections. The good thing about the part-timers, a lot of them have actually come back to us. They were here at one point as a part-timer or a full-timer, they moved on to a bigger department. We have members that worked for Dover, Concord Fire, Rochester Fire, and they've come back here to work part-time. So, we're bringing that experience back. They had the experience in our community, they're getting more in the bigger departments, and they've come back to help us out. The challenge that we see with the part-timers, though, is their full-time schedule and the rotation. And some of them are kind of on the same shift schedule, even though they work different departments. So, you know, when they put in for their shifts for the month, I kinda have four or five put in for the same day, but I have three days with nobody. So, that's been challenging, trying to figure out how to cover shifts that way. We're looking at the budget for the overtime line, we're probably sixty percent spent already on overtime. And that's with myself and Assistant Chief Laporta covering a lot of the shifts. He was on vacation last week, I ended up working Monday through Friday, and I did three twelve-hour shifts that turned into fourteen, fifteen-hour days during the week, just so we could help cover the shifts. We're up against all these larger departments. If you saw the budget explanation, a couple of months ago, we lost three members, two full-time and one part-time to Dover. Dover ended up hiring ten part-time A&amp;Ts because they're adding another ambulance. So, that's what we're really up against. And it's just not us, I mean, every fire department's looking for members, like Chris was saying. Staffing is always an issue, and I was having a conversation with you yesterday that, right now, we have to take the physical fitness test to see that. And these large departments are going to the test, setting up the table, and then talking to the recruits as they're coming and they're passing. So, they just get off the physical fitness test and they're offered jobs early in these large communities that we just can't go up against. Some really good things, the board supported us, and we used our funds, so we now have four bunk rooms, all separate from the members. We could sleep eight in there if we needed to, we have bunk beds, but there's four separate ones. And it's been a great space. We have a separate area for armoires and for all their uniforms, so they can change upstairs. This whole hallway now is locked from the public, so they can have their own space with the locker rooms and the bathrooms. We also used our funds for a pile bed system, which hooks up to our exhausts of the vehicles. So, none of that exhaust is going into the bays, we're not breathing it anymore. It's hooked up to a fan that gets thrown out over to the side of the building, so we're not breathing that anymore. We also got a grant for forty-three thousand dollars for his old cardiac monitor. So, we didn't, something like that, we would have had to go to the town for a warrant article four. We've never had one before in the department. We accepted a used one, kinda tried it out to see if the members would use it, how we would use it. It worked out great, so we applied for the grant, we got it, so that's on our engine. But overall, the proposed budget for this year is a five percent increase. A lot of it is due to a step program that the select board approved that we've been working towards. And I've been looking at the promotions, all the full-timers, we're trying to get them to become lieutenants if they're on shifts. And recently, because of the step program, we actually had our first lateral transfer. So, instead of us losing somebody to a different department, we stole somebody from a larger department.
Where did that person come from? Dover, hopefully?
Salem, New Hampshire. So, but the step program, I did a good use of that, where we sat down and looked it over, and he could see where he's gonna be in a certain timeline for pay. And having that conversation with him, of him becoming lieutenant at some point, he can look at that chart and he knows where he's gonna be. And lieutenant's pay here gets him kinda close to what he was making as a firefighter in Salem. But then, there's a lot of other things that came into the picture. The driving, he wanted to be more in a community that he lives in, his kids go to school in Lee, so there's a lot of other things also. But the big thing was the step program, because we could sit down and look at the amount of money that he would make potentially, so... The increases that we have are gonna cover, like I said, the step program and the promotions that will be occurring. Overtime, the telephone, the cell phones that Karen discussed earlier. With the budget from, I think, last year, where Steve's getting all the buildings and stuff, I've taken over all the fire alarms for all the town buildings. And that's been pretty costly out of our budget. And we don't have, I think we have a thousand dollars in the budget right now for that fund. And I gotta bill for twelve hundred dollars all day for one fire alarm system for two batteries. So, I've upped that, increased that to six thousand dollars. Equipment and maintenance, radio repair, and the fuel lines have gone up as well. But we've had, I put in for almost a twelve thousand dollar decrease in the telephone lines, the uniforms, printing, fire prevention, the dues, and some smaller items like postage and office supplies, so... That's what I have. Any questions?
What's the status of the move truck?
It is operational, it's our first in peace right now.
When did it go operational?
It kinda got delayed more than we'd like it to, but everything was delayed with equipment and stuff. So, it probably went into service about a month ago.
That's one, right?
Engine one, yep. We're still actually waiting for a couple more items for it, so it's not completely ready, but it's operational.
In service?
Yes.
Does this wage line, now that represents a step program, that's not any new positions?
Correct, no new positions. We're still trying to fill the fourth position right now. That was vacated in August. We've had some applicants, but it's kinda difficult when departments are hiring ten, five people, and the pool is getting smaller and smaller. So, the applicants that we've gotten, we've chosen to not move in that direction. We would like better people than what we're seeing, so...
So, are there less people becoming involved in firefighting also? Or is it just that they can't keep up right now with the amount of people that left?
I think overall, COVID definitely turned it in fire service. We're also seeing a lot of retirements. You know, it's a twenty, twenty-five-year job, and depending on the retirements twenty, twenty-five years ago, then kinda sets the tale for what happens now. Dover saw, I think, thirteen members retire in like a year, year and a half. So, they had thirteen hires in one year, and then they just hired another ten, so half that department's brand new. So, we're also seeing the fire service nationwide, volunteerism is dropping, people just aren't doing that as much anymore. I think a lot of people are volunteering their time more with their kids or sports programs or something like that, than not the fire service. If people volunteer with us, Fire One, and as you know, is a six-month process, and then Fire Two is another, four to six months. Your EMT could take up to a year to get it. So, it's a two-year commitment while you have a full-time job and a family and everything else. So, we're just seeing the fire service as a whole, talking to Epping Fire in Barrington, right down on Twenty-Five. A lot of the departments are transitioning from the volunteer department to a combination. But even now, you're seeing more full-time and part-time in the smaller departments, because we can't, we just can't get people.
So, how many, how many part-DM people do you have, volunteers?
The volunteers, right now, I think we only have like four that live in town.
And the rest are, when you talk about part-time, you're talking about people that are hired, that they're not the part-DM people?
Correct, so we have five on-call people that come in when we have calls.
Right.
They also, some of them help out and cover shifts. The part-timers only come in for scheduled shifts, so they only work a twelve-hour or twenty-four-hour shift in one week, and that's it. And a lot of them, in the budget explanation, I did a roster by tunnel position, and I marked off who lives in town and who doesn't. You know, we only have one, two, three, four, five, six people that live in town right now, that are on the department in some form, part-time, full-time, or on-call.
So, we got you the positions that you need, now you can't fill them.
Yep, and I was actually talking to somebody the other day, and this is the first year we're not coming and asking for another position, but you can't fill the position that we have. You know, I think we'll get there. The last month or so, a lot of the departments have been hiring, so there's been a lot of opportunities out there. And even some of the people that we've interviewed for part-time that have now got their positions, full-time in Hampton and Dover and stuff, so... I'm fairly certain that we will fill that position, it's just gonna take some time. And I think, at this point in my career, in our department and who we have as members here, it's not, I just don't wanna hire somebody just to hire somebody. And I've never promoted somebody just to promote somebody. I think that I want it to be a good fit for the town and the department, and that's what we're really looking for. And I just think that's kinda some of the difficulty is, the pool's small, but I also wanna be a little picky.
Think you want them to stay, so...
And I think the three full-timers that we have right now, I've been talking with them over the last couple of months, because they've seen so many people leave there here for a long time.
Is there any, I'm sure you've thought of this, but is there any possibility that some of those guys that came back, that we know and we like, that you could, no, they won't take the full?
They'll be paid up. And I explained this in the budget explanation, but I think the board has been accepting of this step program. We've talked about it a lot. The step program in all other fire departments, you know, every other full-time department has it, it's in their union contract. They know what they're gonna make year fifteen on the job. And although the contract is only good for the three years and the five years that they accept them, they have a set merit increase, they have a set COLA from those three, five years, and they know what they're gonna make. And it's only gonna go up, they're never gonna lose money. So, if they get a new contract, then it's gonna probably be better for them in the long run. And with our step program, it's a two percent merit increase with no COLA in the step program. But these departments are doing two to two-and-a-half percent merit, two, two-and-a-half percent COLA. One of our part-time members that works in Dover, his jaw anniversary is July, and he gets both of them at the same time, so he gets a five percent increase every year. So, I talked to the Epping Fire Chief the other day, he went in front of the board on Tuesday night, he was asking me about our pay. And that's what chiefs are doing, I mean, he felt bad, he was asking me how much we pay, because he wants to pay a little bit more, so he can steal some money. And we were discussing it, you said, East Kingston and Newton are looking at a seven point two percent COLA for all their employees. Brent Woods looking at five percent merit with two point five percent COLA. And I think you said Epping was looking at four point two five for COLA. So, it's great that we get the pay increases, it's great that we get the step, but we're already, from day two, we're already behind the eight ball, because everybody else is raising COLA and merits and stuff. And that's what we're up against. I mean, our full-timers are making forty-two to forty-nine thousand dollars a year. And go to some of these other departments where they have the overtime, and there's other ways to make money for them as well. I mean, they're starting about the same, maybe fifty-two thousand, but depending on the department, they can get overtime and make a hundred thousand a year. They're not gonna leave us, come here.
Most of the collective bargaining agreements that I know chiefs look at and I look at with him were two point five percent merit increases for the most part.
Yep. One or two that were under two point five, but well over a hundred that were based on two point five.
That's merit increase, and then they also have COLA?
They have COLA on top of it.
So, then, yeah.
Something like this about that as a year like now, when you have eight percent increase, you have the COLA of two, which means that's steadier. So, like maybe a few years, you wouldn't have had, but then that balances out, and it's still on the town too. Right now, you know, those towns aren't getting those big increases that other places have to get COLA.
But it's at least something.
Well, that's the thing, because there's years that you can't do that.
It's at least two percent and not nothing, so that's what they're looking at.
The other thing that the chief mentioned, I think, is the ability to do details in overtime. If you are in a town like Hooksett or Manchester, or a town with entertainment venues, you have the ability to pick up between thirty-five and sixty thousand dollars additional income as a fireman. If you're in a town like Lee, we might have a competitive pay scale, but there's no opportunity other than the racetrack to do details.
So, the Mat Berry skate park is really humming along, because you can have big events there.
So, right now, we have the racetrack as a detail in Holland Overland. Thankfully, we have a great relationship with Durham Fire, and we get a lot of their details, because they have so much overtime, that a lot of the firefighters don't wanna work the details. Our firefighters are working the UNH hockey games, yep.
The hockey game.
We've worked football games, I worked a concert last weekend for them. So, there's that, but, you know, the full-timers are getting maybe five a year, which is definitely nice. But it's not, if they went to Durham, I mean, they could work every detail they wanted to, pretty much, on top of all the overtime.
So, Scott, can you talk a little bit more about what the, what the impact of the step is? How do we get the twenty thousand dollar increase with no new positions?
That's just because of the step. So, the way we did the step program was, every person starts, if they're coming to the department as a new firefighter or EMT, they'll start a probation, at year one, they're gonna get a two percent increase. It depends on the personnel, how many years they've been here, because the step goes from probation to year one to year three, so they don't get a merit increase in year two. And then there's also the other side, is the promotions. From a firefighter, EMT, and then our next position's a crew chief. Because we want them, that's kind of a supervisory position where we work with them, they take some classes to become a lieutenant. So from firefighter to lieutenant would be a twenty percent increase.
So these are all for promotions essentially?
Yeah.
That increase, okay, thank you.
I want to make sure that we have the funds to pay them when they, I mean, we have firefighters right now in classes to become officers, so it's going to happen within, I know one's going to happen in this fiscal budget right now, so I'm just trying to prepare for that.
Are there any other increases like certifications that they get? They get another twenty-five cents or anything like that that we do?
No, with the step program, the way we have it now, it's for, we have it as, if somebody were to come in on-call, uncertified, there's a step program from them. And then if they get a certification, we have one for just firefighter, just EMT. And then it goes firefighter, EMT, and then it's lateral, so it's firefighter, EMT, firefighter, AEMT and firefighter, medic. And then we do the promotion. So the basic ones we care about is Fire Two and your EMT and that's how you get.
So those seems, yeah.
Yeah, that's the old system we had at that where you get a dollar if you have a fire chief, you get a dollar for driver operator.
Right.
Yep, we've gone away with that for the step program. Because what we're seeing right now, when we're hiring full-timers and part-timers, they have all those certifications for the most part, so.
So it doesn't matter anyway, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's great.
How you doing?
Sorry, I just want to go back to my table.
CIP?
Oh, yeah.
CIP, last one?
Hi folks, Dave Dieter.
Hi Dave, thanks for joining us today.
Absolutely. So I assume you all have the handout that I circulated earlier. So I'll kind of give a little bit of an introduction to start with. We got a late start, the committee really didn't form until September, so our first meeting was in September, so we were a little behind the eight ball right at the start. And received the spreadsheet that Bob Smith had been using prior, and so we made as good use of that as we could and decided right off, we're not going to be able to recreate the whole thing, so let's, let's focus this year on the, the upcoming three fiscal years, FY twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five. And actually, when you do that, it boils it down to some pretty simple numbers. Total, there's a little more than only twenty items in the, in those three fiscal years. Another thing we did to start with, the threshold prior was five thousand dollars. And so any item that was five thousand dollars, you know, was in, was in the CIP. That's a super low threshold, included a lot of little things that really should be in the operational budget. And a lot of things that were really just maintenance. And so we came to the select board in September, late September, and suggested that we raise that threshold to twenty thousand dollars and focus on actual capital improvements. And so that even if there is an item that was twenty thousand dollars, if it is maintenance, like tires and paint for a loader, that should be in the operational budget. So, so what we did, so we took all those items that were in Bob Smith's CIP plus some new ones and looked carefully at them. So you'll see, I've got columns in the spreadsheet here that are the three fiscal years. And then after that to the right are three columns for, to, for items that should be shifted into operational budgets. So you'll see the heading there, including on operational budget. So those are items that are considered maintenance, like the first one, loader, tires and paint, but also any item that is under twenty thousand dollars. So for example, the next one, the brush chipper, so it's a fifteen thousand dollar item. Our suggestion is, well, that should just be included in the operational budget. And so, so this could be used to communicate to those department heads, include those dollars into their operational budget and then buy it when you need it. If you've got it, if you've got the money in their operational budget and you need that brush chipper this year instead of twenty-twenty-four, buy it when you need it. So it gives the department has a little more flexibility.
Have they taken that approach for this calendar year? Andy, do you know?
It's the first year coming up.
Okay, so.
No, these numbers are not in their budget.
Okay, so tire, paint and, and the loader is not in there?
We're not helping anybody else's budget too, guys.
Right, so, so for the upcoming budget in, that you guys are working on, these numbers, so for the, you know, for highway equipment for the, for our public works department, we should add twenty thousand dollars for this upcoming fiscal year for loader, tires and paint.
Okay.
So is there twenty thousand dollars there now?
That was going to be my question.
Yeah, is it there? Are you transferring it like over to there?
We don't know what Steve actually had in his budget, but this is what was on.
If the loader, tires and paint has been previously included in the CIP, hasn't it been previously saved for in one of the trust funds?
Right, that's what we're wondering.
So that's a, so that's a really good question. We also, we haven't, we didn't have the time to look very closely at those trust funds. There are some big things coming up.
Yeah.
For example, twenty-twenty-five, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, a front-end loader that needs to be purchased. And so I think this is a really good opportunity to look very carefully at what those, what are in those trust funds, what have we been putting away in those trust funds? And maybe we don't put as much money into the trust funds this year and include some of those more dollars in the operational budget, kind of like what has happened in the, in the past number of years with the, with the, the police cars. Those, you know, they need the police cars, they need to have them, just like a brush chipper, you need, they need it.
You can't have, you can't have an item, maintenance item in a capital movement, so those never should have been there in the first place. That was a, I think that's not the thing, is that in order to be a capital movement, they have to be capital.
Right, right. So another kind of different approach this year, in past years, there hasn't been a lot of communication at this stage between the CIP developers and you folks in the select board. And so, so my intention is to give you folks and the select board the tools to make these decisions early, rather than it happened in this, happened in this, you know, this back room and then at the very last minute, I hope you hear us, the CIP, you guys figure out what to do with it. I think it's better, would be better to have this exchange early. And, and you know, CIP is great, it's wonderful to be able to look out in six, ten years or whatever, statute is, is six years. Our CIP goes out way longer than that, which, you know, once you get beyond three or four years, it's not, there's not a whole lot of reality there. And particularly, this is another thing that has bugged me for a very long time, there is no backup for any of this. These are numbers, there are conversations that have been had with department heads. Now, I'm not casting any blame on anybody, it's just how it has been. I have spent about half my career developing CIPs for communities in my, in my profession and, and other communities that really put a lot of energy into their CIPs, which is an important thing. Every one of these items, you go to, if you go to Durham, you go to Dover, Exeter, there's a full sheet that describes what the item is, what is it used for, the age of it, the condition of it, what is, how does it scale on a priority level? And, and then, and then that department head proposes what year it needs to be replaced. Every one of these items should have a page like that. And, and so that's something that we're missing. It's really hard to just look at a number, hear a conversation, have a conversation with a department head and really get a sense of, okay, what is the condition of that thing? For example, the, the culvert at Chesley Brook that need, on Packers Falls Road, that needs to be replaced, it is a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars or so item. There, there are probably grant dollars available for it. Right. It, it is slated for this year. I don't, I don't have any photos of it. I believe Steve when he says, oh, we need to replace it this year.
I couldn't tell where it was exactly as a thing.
Right.
Sure, I have the report, I can show you.
Sure.
That's my stuff.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, for transparency for you folks, for the citizens of the town, they should be able to look at a CIP document and read a little bit about that culvert. What are the issues of it? What does it look like? Where is it?
Are you playing enjoy over there, you guys?
Yeah.
What's happening? What's happening?
In, in, in a previous job I had with the town of Durham, I'm very familiar with that culvert because we, we did, we installed a municipal well in that watershed and actually had to do flow monitoring through that culvert to, to determine what is the flow of Chesley Brook. So it, it's a, it's a pretty cool pipe and I believe that it needs to be replaced. But like anything like that, it's probably not falling down. And so, you know, when push comes to shove and you take a really close look at it, you put the budget together and you go out there, it's like, all right, this thing's really bad shape, but it's not going to fall down this year. So it could be potentially pushed out to the following year. And those are the conversations that need to be had at this level, this time of year. Well, we didn't have the opportunity to really go get into it at that level. And so, so that is my hope for next year, that we will, that all of these items that are slated for twenty-twenty-four and maybe some of these, some of these items, maybe in the next, you know, six weeks, we take a close look at some of these items and say, well, you know what, this one can get pushed out to twenty-twenty-four. Look at the, at the total on the second page. So for FY twenty-twenty-three, the total is seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. Twenty-twenty-four, the total is six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars. Twenty-twenty-five is four-seventy-five. So that's an, that's an average of about six-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand dollars. That's probably a number we want to shoot for this year. It's, what this tells me when you, when you've got these trailing off numbers, okay, there wasn't a lot of time and energy put into these items that are, that are sitting there in twenty-twenty-five. And the same thing happens if you look at the CIP for even later years. There aren't actually that many items, there's, there's a fire truck out there that is big dollars and you know, that's something we need to focus on. But this, this is the sort of thing we, we want to try and do, and Bob Smith did this every year. We look at this total number and this was a conversation that happened at the planning board level, okay, we really want to even this out and kind of have a similar number every year, put in a, put in consistent amounts into the trust fund so, so we don't get these big bumps in the, in the CIP. It's really hard to do that if all you have is a spreadsheet and you don't really have a solid idea. And, and we don't necessarily want to have all the department sitting back here to answer these questions if it could be, if it could be communicated on a single page.
The other thing we were talking about was retirement, age of retirement of our department heads. So all this information is here in their heads and then some of them are planning and leaving in the next few years. And then someone's going to come along and be like, I don't know what they meant, but if they have everything recorded and, or understand, they can hop right in.
That would be a big help.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're going to start in the spring.
So it is no fault of anybody, it's just, that has been the practice for the, you know, since this original CIP was developed. And I think now particularly, listen to Scott and, you know, and the difficulty it is filling positions in the, in the job I just left, yeah, I had three, I had three top positions I could not fill. I just applied for a position in Exeter, Exeter Public Works Department. They are missing seven key people in the Public Works Department. It's, that problem that Scott described is, is in every town and city in the state right now, it's really, it's a big challenge.
Dave, can you elaborate a little bit about what we talked about, the buildings?
Buildings.
A lot of every other year until now.
Yeah, so, the buildings.
She's spent a lot of time talking about the, the buildings were never included on Bob Smith's CIP.
Correct, yeah, well, particularly like library that.
The library we had more from, it was what we, what we had for the buildings, we largely got from the financial planning tool. And they're going to be, but they're going to have, the board of select is going to have to make some hard decisions in terms of how much money to put away for the capital reserve fund for the buildings because that's a, that's a black hole.
And, and you'll also notice, so what I am suggesting is we actually changed that to town facilities, because they're not all buildings. It is the, the build, the town buildings capital reserve fund, I think, but, but we're using it for, for a variety of things. And so actually, since Pat brought it up, why don't we go through some of those items? You'll see there are actually a couple of new items in there, including a new salt shed. Another one that we plugged in to try to drive a conversation about this, and that is demolition of the parish house. So it's something that, that has been talked about, it's been studied.
It's been studied to death.
It's been studied to death.
Andy, can you give us the most current?
There's a grant available if you decide to do that before the end of next year.
What is the status of the current parish house?
This grant money is about to lose down. Yeah, that's interesting.
There's a, there's a half a million, up to a half a million dollars per demolition project available under the six-oh-three housing grant program that rolled out this year. And I, I'm, you know, recollecting that you've got a warrant article with a next July drop dead date for the decision on the parish house, but I believe, I've talked to the folks at the granting agency and they would continue accepting applications through December of that year. And this, there's been very little interest in the demolition portion of the.
And currently, no one can go into that building?
We were advised by the Department of Labor and Inspection, they concluded within the last thirty days that we were to post the building for absolutely no entry for anyone that the building is in nowhere near good enough condition to even have random people walking in it, so.
Are there not like stipulations for that grant? Like if it's from a six-oh-three housing grant, would we not have to build like housing on that property?
No, you don't. It was rather strange, the, even, if you are going to build housing or a municipal building, that is a plus, but if you also feel that it makes your community a happier, healthier place, that's a good enough reason to move in.
More grass.
If it improves green space.
Less stress for town administrators.
There were a whole bunch of very vague criteria.
I think the goal is to get rid of old buildings that are, are hard to, energy efficient, that are not useful, that have asbestos and land and all those things.
It was not as simple as better aesthetics, though. Just as a primary reason.
Well, we'll take their money.
I mean, it is a liability, you know?
Definitely.
It is, it's an attraction for kids to, it's easy to break into any kind of a building and that, that sort of a thing is, is a draw for some kids that want to.
Especially now we posted it.
Sure. Keep out danger.
Keep out, yeah.
Twelve years old, I'd be like, yeah, I'll go and get rid of that thing.
There's other money available for that building to be restored.
That's what I was wondering.
And we've talked about it on the Heritage Commission, I understand that nobody in town has any interest in keeping it as a town building because I think it has, I mean, my honest evaluation is it has far-fetched.
because I think it has, I mean, my honest evaluation is it has far-fetched claims to be a town building. I think you'd have to do some other big project contingency, contingency, contingency. We might be able to keep it. So all that seems implausible to me, and has always seemed implausible to me. But there are, there is money to keep it a building. The town seems to have set up an obstacle for itself, which is that the town will not break it off as its own lot and sell it as a house.
I think we can, we've tried, right? We can't, because it doesn't have its own well, it doesn't have any of its own space, it doesn't have any of its own.
I mean, it's on a big piece of land that could have a well.
Too close to a line.
But that's why we're hoping to put everything useful on it. We bought that land.
The too close to the line thing for the well, well could be. I guess in previous conversations where the facts have been laid out for me primarily by Scott Bugby at the Heritage Commission, has been the town doesn't want to grant itself a zoning exception to break off that lot.
Right.
But it just occurs to me that paying a hundred thousand dollars to have something torn down, when you might be able to get more than that in grant money to have it fixed up, and then the town could sell it.
We looked into fixing it up, and the grant money would be a few hundred thousand dollars with very, very careful exceptions. You have to do it exactly this way and this whatever. We still have to come together two-thirds of that money, which is, we're looking at $600,000 to a million dollars for getting it. I mean, right now, it's dangerous to walk in. So we're talking about a whole overhaul. To me, I don't know where that, but the dollars, like, if somebody said, we'll cover the whole cost, and you can, that's one thing, but nobody was gonna do that.
I thought one of the aforementioned previous studies was that it would be $150,000 to fix up. It's not?
No. It's well over $600,000. And that's, and then the grants available, we were struggling with, and we couldn't.
Okay, you can build a mansion for $600,000.
I know.
You could build a family home.
It doesn't have lead, it doesn't have.
The problem is you have more than one authority, which would require an elevator and all these kinds of things.
Right.
Well, not if the.
If there's a home.
No, we fixed it.
And I'm willing to, I've said all along, if somebody wants to preserve this building, and you would like to pick it up and put it someplace, like, it is all yours, in my opinion. We have to vote on that, but.
And the town can't just draw a line around it and say, would anybody buy this? If it were, would anybody buy this box? So if somebody came along and said, I'll take 300, here's $300,000 for the lot and the maintenance of the house, whatever the offer would be.
You have to have an entrance and an exit. I mean, there's septic, there's like all this stuff that has to get separated and.
The big, one of the big setbacks right now is there's about 12 inches from the corner of the house to the church property line. And the building is primarily accessed by the church parking lot, so.
They sold it with the impression that we were going to take it down. So that, these things are, I've never really worked out to keep them.
And use the land to be able to.
Right.
Expand parking or whatever.
And that's where we're going with the municipal building, it's the perfect lot for that. When we're ready to.
And is that still the plan? Like, to do that building?
Wouldn't you also, if you took the land around that house and enough to do septic and all that kind of stuff, you'd lose that access from the school to the library to the.
Correct.
You know, so you would kind of screw things up there, too.
Behind.
Yeah. And I think it's hard because it's very hard to say, I want to destroy something, destroy. That's an incredibly painful thing to do, and something that nobody enjoys and nobody wants to do. And I've gone around this, I think, a thousand times in different ways and tried to think what are the other options? I just, at some point, I have to ask, too, I'm in charge of taxpayer dollars, and they have to.
No, I'm not, I don't want to spend any taxpayer money.
Yeah.
I'm saying, is it something that could potentially just be sold?
Somebody could pick up and move it, and they could fix it up. I mean, that would be a huge project.
I think they put it out for that originally, and nobody came forward that wanted it.
There was one person, I believe a Lee resident, who specializes in either moving or tearing down and rebuilding historic structures who looked at that, and the name escapes me, but I know that he did not have a strong interest in the project and didn't think it had the value to make it worth.
As, like, is there, are there boards in there that we could sell?
There's a door.
The private means historical artifact that I'm aware of is the front door. The entryway and the front door are historically unique to the structure.
And those should absolutely go to the Historical Society or something, and then becomes a part of our history, absolutely. But does the whole building need to have a million dollar makeover?
Well, I apologize for. It truly needed to inspire our conversation.
Well, but the CIP is supposed to be thinking about what we want to spend our money on.
Right, sure.
What do you guys think we should spend money? What building would you get rid of, or what building would you invest in?
Right.
Long term.
Year long, you were a townsfolk.
Personally, I think it would be better, wiser for the town to invest in the Old Town Hall and things like that.
That's the thing, it's not that, it's not that we're not investing in historic buildings. Library, the Old Town Hall, the ones that have incredible value to the town, we're gonna be putting a lot of energy and time into it. We just can't do everything.
You have, you can't do everything.
So I also, I don't think that we need to go through in detail on every one of these items, but I did want to talk a little bit about the library CIP. And we have, we have some reps from all over here. The library trustees, you can see highlighted in yellow are these three items that they are still waiting for estimates on. And they've got what I think is a pretty awesome plan to, you know, do some renovations, improve the HVAC system, do both interior and exterior work on the building. So I just want to point that out, that we're actually still waiting for some numbers. And Emily, do you have, are you prepared to talk about?
Actually, our estimates just started coming in today. But we don't have them ready for tonight.
Sure.
But we should have them.
For Monday.
Really, probably early next week.
To review.
And then also, the other thing, and this is totally my error, when we submitted our kind of request to the CIP, we submitted items six through 10 under the library there.
Yeah.
And I neglected to say we can take off items one through five.
Okay.
So items one through five can be removed.
Oh, that's fantastic, yeah.
Which is good, right?
Maybe delayed or just removed?
Well, so the shelving replacement, we don't need. Furniture replacement, actually, those two things really aren't needed right now. The carpeting on the lower level, that's part of the basement refinishing, which is item number nine. The library AC replacement, number four, is part of the HVAC system improvement on number six. And then the library repainting outside is part of the exterior improvements. And so items one through five can come off, and the estimates for six, seven, and eight should be probably early next.
During the entire CIP, we kept saying, we're not gonna talk about the library because we're letting them through that, and then we can go through that because.
Already, these part of the renovations in progress?
Yeah.
That's why some of the estimates are already out, and the bids will be.
And then you already have the money in your.
Not for those three.
Oh, but I mean for the other, for the other things that you're renovating.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So you don't need to have a CIP.
Which actually raises a. I have a question regarding that. I'm sorry to blindside you, but it would seem to me, then, that we should also have the renovation listed as a 23 project. Because just to be inclusive, that we are doing that, we are spending the trust funds. And so therefore, it should be included here. We need to amend this and put one more line item, which is that interior renovation that's happening.
Dollar numbers, you can put that in with, or could get that.
I'm sorry.
When you give us the rest of the information, can you give us that, those dollar numbers?
Definitely, because that's part of the conversation on Monday that we're having with the building construction manager.
Yeah, we just kind of left that, holding it space because we need to have a lot of information.
So six through 10, none of them are part of the current plan? Those are future plans?
They are part of it, but they're not part of the budget. Like, they're part of the bids that are out, so they're part of the plan, like, they're part of the renovation plan. But we would be asking for additional money for them.
Okay.
Yeah. Some of them were unexpected. For example, the interior hazardous materials mitigation, that was really unexpected because we didn't know about the hazardous materials.
Can I just ask a general question? Have we started communicating to the department heads about these things that we're gonna be including in their operational budgets at this point?
Yes, with Steve.
Okay.
Yeah. And he would much prefer the idea of having the budget have space, and then he can look and see, okay, what is the thing we need?
Okay.
How much do I have? And then I'm not to wait till next year for this, whatever, but he would have that ability. All of that being said, this is an enormous amount for him to handle. And again, one more reason why he really does need the assistance. Because this is gonna be now on him to keep track of and plan ahead for and all that.
Yeah. And I guess related to that, you mentioned that you didn't have an opportunity to like dive into the trust fund balances and where the spend was.
Correct.
Or like how we can use that money and maybe, like, as we're taking costs into the operational budget for our department heads. Do you think that you're gonna have an opportunity to do that sort of investigation prior to this budget cycle is done?
No, I think we would, and I think if, you know, probably we could go through this one more time and do some updates with the library's information, completely remove these, all these items that really need to go, should go in the operational budget. So then we truly are just focused on the CIP items.
And just give that total for the operational budget for the exterior that needs to be.
Yes.
Well, we also need to, though, because like looking at the financial planning tool, there's things you guys want to move to the operation of that were planned deductions from the trust funds. So we need to balance all those things. So removing it over there, then we can deduct that money from what the future needs to trust us. You might want to look at the financial planning tool.
Oh, we did, yeah, we did actually go through a ton of this. We wouldn't have gotten most of this information without the FPD.
Yeah, no, I'm sure.
So, yeah, and then, yeah, going forward, as we're doing FPD, you can take a lot of things that are off. But we had asked to have all the numbers because what was happening is that they weren't on the CIP, even though they were $5,000, and then they weren't showing up anywhere, but then all of a sudden we get all these expenses, and if you have, you know, six things for $5,000, you even budget it for, that's really hard to keep money up. So I think that's, that's the thing, is figuring out what our budgets.
So that brings up actually another important subject. We didn't want to spend a crazy amount of time in this spreadsheet when really the financial planning happens in the financial planning tool.
Right.
And these, these numbers all need to be plugged into the financial planning tool, which is also where the trust funds reside. So I think that is probably a conversation that we should collectively have once the financial planning tool is, do we have, do we actually have an active one, or is it still?
It's still being. I do not have an active.
Held in ransom, yeah.
What I'm saying is, don't just flat out add $20,000 to the operating budget because it's already accounted for in the trust fund.
Take it from right.
So we make people dumb.
We just need to move the money from like trust funds to operating budget.
I guess we need to put it in the operating budget, but then we need to like ask for less money to put in the funds.
Right, right, yeah.
I think we're looking to the financial planning tools to actually come up with the numbers for the war.
So I understand.
I think the thing to remember, too, is that the financial planning tool told us we had to put away, what, was it like $600,000? And we ended up doing like, like, we don't, we've never once put away anything that we needed to. The expenses were coming, so I don't think that there's that much.
That's fair.
Yeah.
The impacts to the operating budgets, all of them were Steve's except for a couple larger ones.
So, yeah, they're pretty small, really, you know, for this upcoming year.
This doesn't actually have a funded, they don't actually have funded trust funds.
Budget, yeah. It was the utility.
What do you think the fire budget in there?
Radio infrastructure.
Just that truck?
There's two trucks and a radio infrastructure.
And so that's a question, too. Replacing two utility trucks in one year, do they really need to both be replaced in the same year?
Right, I think that is because one turns into the other. And it's not actually replacements fully, one is just outfitting one into a different vehicle. So, yes.
Right.
But that could be a discussion, is that something that, you know, has to happen?
Sure, and that's exactly the kind of thing that should be on that item description.
Yes.
So it's clear to everybody, what is this? In Bob Smith's CIP, utility one had a parentheses of 2023 on it, which usually those parentheses on trucks and whatnot describe the year it was purchased. So that's why it says 2023, question mark.
So is utility one, but I guess based on everybody's understanding, is that the truck that we just replaced and like put into commission a month ago?
That was a fire truck.
These are little.
It's a fire truck.
One of the ones that's gonna be coming up. Pickup trucks. These are pickup trucks.
Oh, so utility one is not a, not the fire truck?
It's got a box with doors on it.
Got it, okay. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah. And that's what's gonna be so great, is that next year you'll be able to look at it, and you'll be like, oh, I wonder what that is, and there'll be a full.
And there will be a picture, maybe. Like, oh, that's a front end loader, that's a utility.
And look at the rest on that, they should have it, or, you know, it looks pretty good to me.
I'm excited about it.
Yeah, it's gonna be, we just have a, we're gonna have a very big, long year of getting it good.
And ideally, this should be almost the first discussion we have here. That way, when the department heads come in, then you can talk about that part of it.
Yeah, for sure, yes.
You know, that makes more sense.
We've almost never had a CIP split department.
So if we just change, when we think about it, we start working in the spring, work through the summer, and then we're ready, when your first meeting, ready to give it to you. Now, the whole time going through, you can ask each person, and you can look at the budget and say, well, you know, you've got this big thing or whatever, it just makes so much more sense.
Yes, having the CIP done by August.
Makes sense.
Would make sense.
That would be really, really good.
Sure.
Really, really good.
And that's consistent, you know, in the community I was just working in, you know, budget was adopted in June, CIP needed to be done in December.
Now, you talked about wrapping this all in and into the financial planning tool and so forth. So.
Separately, yeah.
Is it still necessary, and do we still want like CIP and financial planning tool? Are they two different things?
The reason that.
Are you gonna mush them together eventually?
The reason that we started the financial planning tool was partly just an enormous amount of frustration in my heart when I was trying to understand this and I was running. And I said, I don't understand why is there no place anywhere in the entire town that we're saving money for buildings anywhere? What is that? And we don't even know what that is. And I had all these questions, I said, couldn't we just do this? Can we just like make a, you know, and then John Tappan was able to say, oh, we can actually, you know, and so that.
That's how it started growing, yeah.
What's happening now is one huge piece of that need is gonna be taken care of by the CIP, which is to have the actual information, the details, which is what John was trying to get into the financial planning tool, pictures and ideas. Then, like we just talked about with the budget, if you can have these smaller ideas be part of a budget, you're not gonna need to keep track of those in the financial planning tool anymore. You have to have the, each department have those things that they're working through, they have their budget. So I think the need for it changes, and there might be some, I don't know. You can tell me what you think. But I think the point was to find all the loose lost pieces, find a place to put them as a holding place until we got all this stuff figured out.
Just a more comprehensive view.
So maybe the financial planning tool isn't gonna be necessary at some point or whatever? I'm just, it sounded like you had a big.
I think the, I think the idea of maintaining the financial planning tool makes sense, and the CIP should be a module of that.
Correct.
Part of it, okay.
Right. You know, having them sort of two separate efforts is a little silly. They are two separate efforts, but they need to come together early in the process, not at the very end.
And then you can see.
It's like I have my monthly budget.
Right there.
Myself, but then I also want to save for a down payment for a house, and so I need to put money away for that, too, outside of my monthly budget, but it's still a cost I need to consider.
I know, yeah, I know what the concept of the CIP and all that is, but it sounded like the financial planning tool was encompassing pretty much everything, and.
Exactly, yeah.
So I didn't know if that was the plan, that you were just gonna sort of put the CIP into that and not need it, or, I mean, it's still part of it, it's still, it's, but I just thought of the financial planning tools.
Certain set of rules and has certain things it has to do. And we were asking for questions. Well, we were asking, we were asking for answers to questions to make long-term decisions.
Well, it's just one part of the module that is inputted into that, so those, you don't lose track of those things.
Right. It's just hard to make large decisions if you don't have any facts. So I think what it did was it gave us some places to hold on to. Okay, these are the expenses, this is what it costs, and cost benefit analysis. You have to figure out how much it costs to keep building up. You don't realize, you just keep saying, oh, we'll just keep fixing something without looking at the long-term expense to the town, so.
So, you know, the spreadsheet that Bob Smith created is a very cumbersome thing. And I think if it could be simplified down to something like this, and then. And then these numbers are used to plug into the financial planning tool where those final decisions are made about what comes, what comes out of all the trust funds and what comes out of the operational budget. So I think this would be useful to annually come up with those numbers. What are the CIP numbers we want to apply into the budget this year?
Right. Yeah. And then FPT can do the expanding of the amounts and then, you know, how much it's going to change in price concept, which the CIP does not.
Right.
One thing that was a little weird was the CIP, the financial planning tool that we got to work with was a PDF. It wasn't an operational spreadsheet. We couldn't get to any of the backup. So when, when David was saying earlier that we didn't have any backup for the numbers. Some of the backup does exist in the financial planning.
Correct.
John Tappin spent a lot of time putting stuff together, but those links didn't work in the version that we had.
Right. Why didn't you get the Excel version? Who's holding on to the Excel version?
Mr. Tappin.
Mr. Tappin, yeah.
Why can't we have that?
Good question.
Top secret.
He could give it to us.
Or we just won't give it up?
He wants it to be, to be, to be done, he wants it done. And I understand that because he doesn't want it to be full of stakes. But it's been a little challenging, that's why.
Can, like progress, not perfection is what we're looking for.
Files can be copied.
Yeah.
So you give somebody a copy of that, and he could have his copy, and his copy could be marked perfect, and the other copy could be marked experimental.
Work in progress draft.
Yeah.
And not able to be modified.
Right.
Getting back to the CIP's fact-finding mission. Um, I, I like the idea of having a page for every single thing. And then being able to look at that and say, oh, that, that seems reasonable or, you know? And, and maybe we could push the, okay, we record a department head recommended replacement date, and then we say, yeah, but you're not getting it then, or what? An actual replacement date. Um, do you have a plan for putting that all someplace?
So, so, um, we could definitely develop the template. A lot of municipalities use, use a similar template. Um, town of Exeter has a really nice CIP. It's, it's, it's all in a spreadsheet. Uh, Concord uses an excess database. It's, it's pretty awkward and dated. Durham uses a spreadsheet, you know, so we could easily put together a template and then, and then the department heads need to fill out that information.
I was going to suggest there's some tools where you can just build a database online. That's just basically grant some people administrative access.
Sure.
You, you could make the entire thing public. So if you want to go on and look at culvert costs, they can just, we didn't have culvert disputes.
Sure.
Um, but, yeah, I mean, I, I use, I use databases like this for planning in my own work. And so I could imagine that there would be a table for departments, a table for people, a table for stuff. And then they all just get associated with one another. And that page could include anything that you want.
Right, right.
Pasting, you could paste in a YouTube video of here, here's, here's how this, here's how this furnace will work. Or whatever artifacts you wanted to attach to it could be there, whereas I'm just seeing it being limited to be a.
So Cor, are you inviting yourself to go do this and, right, work on this awesome?
On the CIP?
Yeah, a few, a few, uh.
To set up that. To set up that database.
He might want to be a manual though.
Yeah. We're scheduled to have.
Did we hear anything?
Do we have a chance?
Oh, yeah.
No, we're probably going to go to the hospital to be induced on Monday. So, yeah, I mean, I will have a small child, but whatever.
Free mom.
I'll just throw that burden on the wife and come to her safe. I'm sure the marriage will just keep sliding along.
Camera's rolling, huh?
Yeah. I, I do think it would require a minimal amount of time to set up something that would work pretty well. And then I, I don't really want to be involved in the details of the culverts and so on. But I would be happy to set up the database, set up things.
That'd be fantastic.
That would be excellent.
At one of our earlier meetings, we talked about the issues around how we store computer data that is, you know, is this the town's computer data? Or is that project?
Yes, we've come a long way. Andy is on the network.
Hi, Pat.
You're still having a meeting?
Yes.
It's not eight o'clock yet.
I, it's not eight o'clock yet. Can I just speak to him for a minute? Um, we're canceling the, um, meeting, the Eric Commission meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Hi, Pat. Hi.
Just a question, is there, is there any off-the-shelf software that handles this that anybody's familiar with? That we could purchase for a small amount of money, probably less than a thousand dollars?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. There might, there might be something out there.
I thought Cor just volunteered to do it for free.
Yeah, what I'm suggesting, I think we'd have a, a small subscription fee associated with it, so. Yeah, it's not an off-the-shelf thing, but yeah, if there is, if there is something that municipalities use, I just, my, my experience with, this is made for governments, is prepare to pay fifty thousand dollars and it will be bad. So.
How?
So, I know Andy has found something good in accounting. I'm not challenging that by any means. But, but database software is now just so, so cheap and so good.
Right.
And you can build something where you say, I hate being hemmed in by something of, oh, if we only had one more field. Because we have this, we'd like to have this, you know, provisional number in between or something, and you can just add on as many fields as you like.
I love that, yeah.
And we're not talking about building the Saturn V here. It's, you know, we're, we're going through a few departments and collecting a few numbers, and, you know, it should be okay.
Were you going to say something, Andy?
I don't recall. I was, yeah, we talked about responding to that.
It was about.
A space for.
It was about how do we, how do we deal with all this computer stuff, these computer projects we're dealing with in terms of, um, town ownership and where things are and accessibility to people.
And we do have the capacity for a Microsoft-based, government-compliant storage, um, which I have worked with some committees to set up. And it's not been, we have one or two committees that have taken it and run with it and love the storage. And at least one committee that has not been able to deal with it at all and has gone back to Google, um, storage.
We're going to be assisting them, they just, some of it's hard, you know, the first few times you get into it.
Oh, I, I know, I just was curious of the projects.
We are working on that still, and, uh, we're in the process of trying to develop, but whether it's an online thing that anyone can access or whether it's a series of tutorials from, uh, Back Bay about how, how to get the most out of these storage options. Uh, the other thing that will be happening, um, as we move to MTS, um, you know, as the new year starts, a lot of that is going to be cloud-based. So I know initially for the last year or so, we've been talking about needing more, um, uh, more hard drive space, um, that sort of thing for the town office system, particularly the financial system, and that should go away fairly quickly, which may give us some other space options.
So we have just a few meetings left of the ABC, and I think that it's important that we probably hear from you again. And so, you know, maybe after we've communicated this with the department heads, all of them. And then, um, after we've had an opportunity to take a look at some of the trust funds.
Sure.
See how we can move that money into the operating budget.
Yeah.
Um, our next meeting is on the twenty-ninth, and then we have another one on December sixth. And then we're presenting to the select board on December twelfth.
So how about a timeline to the December sixth meeting?
Yeah, I think we may need that time to work.
Sure.
I can get you, I know, I've spoken with Betrind about getting information on the capital reserve funds and trust funds, and I can get you an up-to-date report of what we've got in there too.
Okay.
So the meeting on December sixth is slated to be the ABC members only.
Oh, okay. So that's fine, you did.
We can just a little period of time to, yeah, do that.
Yeah, I don't mind. Okay.
We could start off.
It should be a kind of a quick update, I would think.
Okay.
So then maybe we'll just do that first.
Be part of it, so I don't need to be at the update anything.
Yeah.
Hey, we can scuffle. Uh, you're having another meeting today.
Also have to check some of the work.
That was not my, that was not my.
Check the details on Laver's native Eastern Bertrand. And the subtle contours that we need.
If we have him personally, is it like?
You'll leave one page to.
Yeah, that's, that's what the difference is between internal and not, or do you guys even have to be here?
Right, that's what I'm saying. So do we?
I don't even know if you have to be.
Because we would have the piece of paper that.
So, so you can probably handle it then on the sixth, this one.
Well, I'd handle this, like, yeah, during the budget stuff, and then you guys, the ABC, would be able to understand it without me or Dave, I would think. Okay. I just don't, I know the four of us meeting is really, really tricky because all, all of us have insane schedules. So to do it in the next week or two with Thanksgiving, I just don't.
Well, the other thing is that it has to be posted and then the town, so you can't really do that.
Right.
Well, I can.
You can come and do a quick thing or something maybe, but that's.
I can do these updates and, and include a line for the trust, the various trust funds. And then circulate it back to you folks. And if you want me to come on the sixth, I can do that, or if you feel I'm, you're all set.
Sounds good?
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you for the riveting discussion.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for what you guys do here. It's important.
Are you guys quick to close in the afternoon?
He gives it back to you.
So we have meeting minutes. Has anybody read the meeting minutes? Maybe saying no. All right, next, for our next meeting, can we all try to commit to reading the meeting minutes? So we agree with the meeting minutes.
Great, awesome feedback.
Okay.
I'll commit to try.
Commit to try. It's totally fine. Okay, so.
I have one quick question.
Otherwise, when asked.
I have this thing that I had to mention this to Betrind or CIP. Historically, Scott has taken the changes in the budget and he's tried to forecast a tax rate.
Yeah.
And we had, remember I asked you about, this was the thing that, is, is that something that you give him or does he do that on his own?
He does that on his own. Um, Joanne Clancy pulls the numbers that he asks for. Um, and then he arranges it specific to his unique spreadsheet that he uses.
Okay, because he, he comes up with a estimate of the impact of our budget on the tax rate for next year, which is all the residents at the town meeting really care about. And I didn't know if, I gathered he hadn't done that yet.
So we have an initial draft of that, uh, that he sent around, I don't know, maybe six weeks ago.
Yes, but.
But it hasn't been updated with the full numbers.
It hasn't been updated, yeah.
Yeah.
Been updated for anything yet.
Yeah, so I can email him and ask him if he can give us an update of that, based on what we've seen so far.
Because he's.
Does he do that early on though? I think he does that after we do our, go through our.
He usually kind of does it like.
He does it as we go along. And I think we've heard from just about everybody now, I think.
Yes.
It was like, I suspect we're going to get hit in the head with this, I, I think.
If he includes everything, yeah. He gives an example, okay, if we include everything, this is what it's going to be, if we don't.
And we just upped the operating budgets with the numbers from the CIP. And there's also, I meant that the library, there's another twenty or thirty thousand dollars that would increase the library's budget this year. And I don't know how that's, I mean, some of the things we talked about kind of casually tonight are going to have some real impact on it.
Yeah, right.
It's sort of the seat-of-the-pants thing you can do, um, and I may be able to do it, it's not a hundred percent accurate. But if you can just get, you know, what equals a dollar on the tax rate that you can talk to people about. And typically for a budget your size, it's, it's going to be somewhere between five and six hundred thousand dollars, I would think. It's going to equal a dollar on the tax rate, and you could go from there and break it down to a quarter or fifty cents, what have you. And if, if people can relate to it and understand what you're saying better than.
So I think that's really where we're going to get to the, the meeting where we sit down together and he's going to go, well, you know. Listen, the tax rate goes, this increase of the tax rate is not acceptable. We just added, probably what, altogether between the, what we're putting in Steve's budgets and the library, another, what, seventy thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah, close to.
Remember that it's not Scott's opinion. Uh, Scott is anticipating the voters rejecting him and then having a massive budget catastrophe.
Yes, yes, I'm not trying to put it on. I'm not trying to put it on Scott, but he's usually the one who comes up with an estimated tax rate and says, listen, this isn't going to fly, these are voters.
The increase for the operating budget is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars if we move everything for twenty twenty-three. From the CIP to the operating budgets.
So that's a twenty-three cent change.
And just, and I think something Rebecca said, there's not an option to take money out of the trust funds just to move it to the operating budget.
Right, you could, yeah, you could leave them where they are.
And add more money.
And out of the trust fund.
And then any extra money in the funds can be put against the tax thing instead of putting it in there.
You're raising the taxes by that much less if you're.
Yes, right.
And what about the, not the leftover, but you always have that fund that you sort of.
Yeah, we just dropped it five cents.
You get, you get your unassigned fund balance, which typically in, in LEED, at least from what I've seen, rolls between one point eight and two point one million dollars. And the select board just used a hundred and fifty thousand of it to sort of maintain the tax rate, that tax rate setting last week.
Well, thanks for that, guys.
Enjoy that five cents on your house, right?
One hundred and fifty thousand like almost every year.
I thought it was important to hopefully not, I think we, I think we all thought it was important to not have that during that increase.
Yeah, and if you, if you haven't seen the tax rate, it's, it's been out on social media, that sort of thing, the new tax rate is twenty-one dollars and seventy-two cents, which is down a nickel from last year's tax rate.
I saw it on Facebook, thanks for that.
Thanks, Scott. I missed it on Facebook, but I was.
And our equalization ratio, uh, in the course of a year has gone from ninety-eight point nine percent to eighty-three percent, given the real estate.
Yeah, what is that?
That's the, the, um, property value. Uh, you try to stay at a hundred percent. When we did the revale last year, we were close to a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Just a, just a tick under it, and in just twelve months, we've come down to about eighty-three percent.
And the market, that's the problem, is that you were chasing, you know, we came in right after the high, and then we.
And now the market's doing this.
Right.
Yeah.
So my, my, the short question is, that twenty-one dollars, the tax rate, if we, the budget as it sits at the moment, what would that do to the tax rate for next year?
You can make a projection, but it is incredibly hard to be on the money and accurate.
I know.
Who would that?
I know.
You said it was roughly a half million equals a dollar to the rate?
I, I would think, just thinking of what your overall budget is likely to be, it's somewhere between five and six hundred thousand dollars is going to equal a buck on the tax rate.
So we're at a quarter on the tax rate right now, if it's up a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Well, that's just the CIP I use today. That's not all of the, that's not the whole change.
And every budget that came in here has raises, so.
But you don't know what your revenues are going to be, you don't know what you're going to have for unassigned fund balance next year that you're able to use to.
To bring those down?
Right.
Possibly.
Well, you pretty much always use some unassigned fund balance to try to lower your tax rate or at least keep it static.
And sometimes we've used it to put into capital improvements. A more powerful way to do that.
Any other ABC?
Eventually, there will be no unassigned funds.
All the funds will be assigned at some point.
You have to have a buffer.
You have such an amount of on the side.
Because then if you have a crisis, like your, like this building has a, has a.
Did the area rate?
So we may need to sort of draw it down to that tier of fund balance.
We didn't put any, we didn't take any more out than we had left over from last year. Because it's not like we drew, withdrew from the unassigned fund.
We just added to it.
That flows to start at the same level essentially.
You, everyone paid a little too much, we gave it all back to everybody.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Like we have extra.
Yeah, yeah. We had, we had revenue rates, so any revenue, so at the end of the year, any revenue and any expenses, whatever's left over, has to go towards the unassigned fund balance or to decrease the tax rate. So we just took the leftovers and put it to the tax rate instead of putting in the unassigned fund balance. We didn't have to take money out of the unassigned.
There was about a hundred and eighty thousand dollar balance, um, from last year's budget. And the select board attempted to get us close to that one hundred and eighty, coming back to offset the tax rate as they could.
Understood. All right, no more ABC. Pass it back to you, you guys.
All right, great. Um, where's your adjournance? Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, thanks you guys.
Thank you.
Just sorry, I cried ten minutes ago.
Pat, I was just wondering if you can talk about any of the questions that happened on.